He's ready to have a good time. Let's get this party started. Good morning, everybody. How's it going? I'm Ryan Dorsey. I'm the Chair of the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We are here to hear one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, 10 bills. We are kind of deciding the order of these bills. They were all announced for 9:00 a.m., so I don't think that we have any constraints about which order we can hear them in, and we're going to hear them in order largely dictated by the presence of the sponsors of the bill. Before we begin with the first bill, we have with us today Vice Chair of the Committee and Vice President of the City Councilwoman Chair in Green Middleton. We have Paris Gray from Councilmember Paris Gray from the 8th District. We have Councilmember Mark Parker from the 1st District, who wishes to note that I said we would start on time at 9:00, and he was here, and we didn't start at 9:00, and he notes that for the record. We have staff to the committee. You are Julianne Jamar, our new staff member from the Office of Council Services. Thank you for being here today. We have representatives from various agencies, as well as our bill sponsor for the first bill that we will hear today, Member of the Committee Councilwoman Felicia Porter. Thank you for being here to present your bill on time and here this morning. We are hearing first.
And also Member of the Committee.
And also Member of the Committee.
Thank you.
We are now joined also by Councilwoman Blanchard from the 11th District. We are hearing Bill 250054, the zoning W-2 overlay district amendment. This is for the Westport Overlay Master Plan?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Porter, take it away. Let us know what this bill's about.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So this is a zoning amendment to the Middle Branch waterfront area. It's just to revise the view of the corridors. We received community support from the Westport CEDC, my office, and also the South Baltimore Gateway Partnership. And we have representatives from Rosenberg, Martin, and Greenberg to answer any of the technical questions that you may have.
Cool. Thank you. We have bill reports. The City Solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle Toth, on behalf of the City Solicitor, we approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Great, thank you. Planning Commission?
Good morning. Planning Commission recommends favorable.
Thank you. Baltimore Development Corporation?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Tom Welly, on behalf of BDC, we stand by our favorable report.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock for DHCD. We respectfully stand by our favorable bill report.
Great. Department of Recreation and Parks?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I'm Jenny Morgan from Baltimore City Recreation and Parks. We encourage open access to the waterfront for everyone and stand by our report, which is favorable.
Great. I don't see Finance or anybody else referred this bill. Gabe, you did have a couple of late reports. I don't know. I didn't get a chance to look at which ones those were. Okay, Mason Lord Drive and what's the other one? Great, that's our bill reports. From, just a question for the Law Department. Do we need to do any sort of finding of facts for this? Is this an amendment to an overlay? No?
The bill was analyzed by planning as a rezoning, a change in the zoning of property, but it actually is not. The property remains a W-2 waterway district. What you're doing is just changing the text of the code. So this is a text amendment, and my bill report sets out the standards for what the council has to consider in changing the text of the zoning code. It's just a legislative process. It's not quasi-judicial because you're not changing the zoning of one property. You're changing the requirements in the code for a W-2 overlay district. So theoretically, if you created another W-2 overlay district somewhere, these new requirements would apply to that also.
Great. And I note that there are no advertising or posting requirements or anything for this. Is that correct?
It does not, I think for a legislative authorization where you're changing the zoning code, it does not have the same posting of property requirements that a change in zoning of a particular property would have.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have comments from the public? From our Representative Caroline Hecker from Rosenberg, Martin, Greenberg?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg, Martin, Greenberg, on behalf of the applicant. I just want to clarify a couple of things respectfully. There was an advertising requirement. It was published in the daily record as required. You should have a copy of the certification in the file for the bill. So there was an advertising requirement for this. The other thing is, while I agree with the Law Department that this is a text amendment to the code, the new zoning code actually does set forth standards that are supposed to be evaluated when the council is doing a text amendment. It isn't a rezoning. We're not changing the zoning designation as they indicated. But there are just a couple of standards that the council's required to consider when amending the text of the code, which include the consistency with the city's comprehensive master plan. Here, this amendment is proposed in the context of a master plan specific for the Westport project, which contemplates townhouses and multifamily dwellings with a combination of homeownership and rental units, some affordable, some market rate. This is part of that master plan. It's consistent with the city's master plan. The council's required to consider whether the amendment would promote public health, safety, and welfare. It will do that by creating additional view corridors, which will increase connectivity between the waterfront development and the existing residential community across Cloman Street. The amendment is consistent with the intent and general regulations of the code, which again sort of quadrupled the number of view corridors on the 43-acre Westport site. And it furthers the code's stated goal of enhancing the value of communities and neighborhoods by creating these additional waterfront connections. The council's required to consider whether the amendment would correct an error or omission, clarify existing requirements, or affect a change in policy. This is, I think, a minor change in policy. It furthers the existing policy of connections to the waterfront through these view corridors by increasing significantly the number of view corridors in this W-2 overlay. And then finally, the extent to which the amendment would create nonconformities. This is not going to create any type of nonconformity with any type of plan. So with that, we appreciate the committee's consideration and request a favorable vote.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Caroline before she steps away? Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for any of the city agencies? Councilwoman Parker?
I think so. And I'm not sure. I mean, the Law Department brought this up, but maybe Planning or somebody else who might want to weigh in. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You mentioned that the amendment here is the W-2 overlay sub-district. If someone from an agency's standpoint would be able to give other examples of where we currently have W-2 overlay sub-districts, that might help me understand the broader implications of this change beyond simply the Westport item that we're talking about right now.
My understanding is that currently there is only one W-2 overlay district. So the standards that are being changed in the zoning code would only apply to that district. But there is nothing preventing the council from creating another one or down the road, changing a W-1 overlay district to a W-2, at which point these standards would apply to that also.
I really appreciate that. It's very helpful. I wasn't aware of one, but I don't want to pretend that my knowledge of the city zoning is the same as some other people in the room. So thank you very much.
Eric, do you have anything to add to that?
No. Should there be a necessity for another W-2 overlay zone? Because we do have the map or illustration in the code, I would anticipate that there would also need to be a text amendment and a similar illustration of boundary and view corridors would be adopted at that time. I think for the W-1, maybe to more fully answer your question, I think there's only two other locations of W-1, so this is a relatively uncommon thing, and so they're highly tailored for that reason.
Thanks, Chair.
Cool. Okay, great. Yeah, Councilwoman Blanchard?
So I think this is maybe a follow-up question for Mr. Tiso. Do you foresee, and if anyone else would be the correct person to answer it, feel free to jump in. Do you foresee there being demand for this, like a W-2 overlay elsewhere in the city? And if so, do you think this would cause any issues for the text amendment change? Would cause any issues for that?
Not in the immediate future. I think this is a bit of an experiment of trying to come up with a way to apply different development standards and requirements without using a planning development. So we wanted it to be some lighter step intermediate thing, and that's what we've tried here, to not have that extra burden that a PUD might impose. I'm not aware of any particular need of other ones in the immediate future, but we'll handle it when that comes, should it ever happen.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, as someone who's working through some PUD stuff in my own district, this seems like a shrewd effort.
Okay. Is there a motion to move the bill favorable? Okay, the motion has been made. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Great. The bill will move on to second reader at the next council meeting. Thank you. Okay, let's see. We have... We will go on to Bill 250053, rezoning 4001 East Baltimore Street. This is Councilman Parker? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Fellow committee members. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the rezoning of 4001 East Baltimore Street from an I-2 zoning district to an IMU-1 zoning district. This property is located in a transitioning edge part of our community from a development standpoint, land use standpoint, zoning standpoint. It's in the same block. The block is dominated by a C-2 strip mall-style development, grocery store, liquor store, pizza, bakeries, things like that, restaurants, dog daycare, grooming facility. And then transitions into the Haven Street quarter, which is industrial, but also a number of the industrial buildings have been converted to commercial use, including restaurants, banquet hall spaces, axe-throwing, a brewery, and things like that. And so it's right in the middle of a really dynamic area where the flexibility of an IMU-1 will allow for the continued development of this parcel alongside a really dynamic and quickly changing part of our community. I would note from the interest of this committee, it's also essentially directly across the street from where the Greenway Trail will go through along the Old Norfolk Southern right-of-way and where there'll be an entry point. And so, again, this is an area that's seeing some real investment and change in terms of how the land is used and how people are engaging in that space. And this is consistent with creating greater flexibility in that area.
Great. Thank you, Councilman. Agency reports. We will start with the City Solicitor?
Thank you, Chair Dorsey. Jeff Hoxteller with the Law Department. We approve this bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Great. Eric, Planning Commission?
Planning Commission recommends favorable. We believe there's enough information to support the rezoning based on a finding of change as outlined in our staff report and that this change also matches the mixed-use predominantly industrial category in the general use plan.
Great, thank you. DHCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdock, DHCD. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Thank you. BDC?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom Welly, on behalf of BDC. We stand by our unfavorable bill report. And I'd like to add that that finding is not a reflection of the relative merits of any proposed redevelopment, but rather an agency standpoint of always seeking to preserve contiguous industrially-zoned land. And while we know that the IMU, obviously, redesignated, the sought-redesignated IMU zoning designation does fall in line with industrial zoning, the proposed use will likely not be industrial. And as an agency, BDC always seeks to protect our industrially-zoned land. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you not making me draw it out of you for clarification purposes, as this is kind of a known standard for BDC, so I appreciate that. Any questions from the committee for any of our agencies? Okay, and this property is represented by Chase Hoffberger. Chase, do you want to come up and say anything? Well, come on up. Let's just, real quick.
Sure. Hi, Chase Hoffberger, on behalf of the applicant, Saffo Contracting. Can I answer any questions regarding the development plan, proposed use, rezoning, BDC recommendation?
And per the findings that are required for the committee, this is considered how?
This is considered what?
Is this a...
Oh, this is considered a change. The findings of fact were emailed to Tony Leva in May. There's been significant population growth, change in development in the area. You can see, if you look at the zoning map from before 2017, it was far more industrial in the area, but now there's a real proliferation of residential, commercial, IMU zoning in the area, and that kind of reflects the development plan along Haven Street.
Great. Yeah, I would tend to agree that this is a reasonable finding. I think the committee should take a vote to find facts on the matter, that this is a matter of a change in the general area around it, warranting a change to match that, consistent with the kind of findings of facts that we're required to find. Are there any questions for Chase on this matter? Great, and what we heard from Chase is consistent with what we heard from the bill sponsor. I guess I would just propose a finding of facts, that this is in fact a change of character to the neighborhood and that this amendment, the change to the zoning, follows that principle. Is that cool? I'll just make a motion to find this as a matter of fact. Motion to find this as fact? All in favor of finding this as fact? Say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Great, the committee finds this as fact. Is there a motion to move the bill as favorable? The bill has been moved. All in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Great, the bill is moved favorable, and we'll come to the City Council at the next City Council meeting. We have Councilman Torrance with us, so we will go to Bill Number 250037, zoning, conditional use conversion of single-family dwelling unit to three-dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances, 1727 McCulloh Street. Give us one minute, Councilman. We're coming up with this order on the fly here, sorting through the packets here. Councilman, tell us about your bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Torrance of the 7th District. I come in support of this bill as it has appropriate community support from the Madison Parking Improvement Association. Also, the applicant has received support from the adjacent neighbors. As with all zoning applications in the 7th District, we require community support as well as adjacent neighbors so that people are aware of it. But also, this applicant says that they were here to check requirements as well. With that, I just leave it to the committee.
Great, thank you. Agency reports? Yes. Oh, any questions for the bill sponsor? I'm sorry.
No, no, it's quite all right. It may not be necessary to be a bill sponsor. I just wanted to clarify, the cover here says, the cover page says, "Three dwelling units." You spoke "three dwelling units." The text of the bill says "two dwelling units." I just wanted to make sure we knew which it was.
That's a, thank you for noting that. I was just looking for something else in the bill.
I believe we had an amendment for that. One second. There's a draft in the mail.
I don't believe that the committee has a written amendment for anything.
Apologies, the applicant agreed to the three units, not the two units. It is an email.
I believe it is the option for three units. This was on the...
So, okay, so what I'm seeing in the findings from the Law Department here, and they can speak to this, is that the lot is approximately 1,575 square feet, which is sufficient to allow for two units, which is consistent with the bill.
Okay. I'm fine with the two units.
Okay, great. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilman. Great, we'll go to the Law Department.
Thanks, Chair Dorsey. The Law Department can approve this bill for form and legal sufficiency. As I noted in our report, even though the bill purported to create a variance for off-street parking requirements, that language was not actually in the text. But that's not necessary now because that relevant law has since changed with the passage of 250006.
Essentially, the variance was noted in the title, but not the actual text of the bill. And since the introduction of the bill, the law has changed so that the thing that was thought to be needed as a variance for off-street parking has been changed because the new law exempts 1-, 2-, and 3-dwelling residences from any off-street parking requirement?
Right, and therefore, Section 9703-F of Article 32, which was the previous off-street parking requirements, no longer exists in the code.
Great. Okay, so that's the Law Department. Let's go to Planning Commission?
We concur with the Law Department's analysis here, and I'm glad because we looked at two units. I was quickly starting to do some zoning calculations in the background, but the commission recommended favorable.
Great, thank you. HCD?
Stephanie Murdock, Baltimore City DHCD. We stand by our favorable bill report. Thank you.
Great. And are there any questions from the committee for any of our agency representatives? And is there... So this is, the applicant here is the property owner, Victoria Wu, Councilman. The applicant here represents herself. There's not a... Okay, and she doesn't have like a land use pro representative. Okay, great. Just checking, is there anybody else here to testify on this bill? Great. Then is there a motion to vote favorable on this bill? Great, the bill has been moved favorable. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Great, the bill is voted favorable, and we'll move to the City Council at its next meeting. Thank you, Councilman Torrance. We have with us Councilwoman McCray, who has a bill before the committee, so we will move on to hers next. Bill Number 250049. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Danielle McCray, Councilwoman for the 2nd District. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the members of the committee. This council bill would release, and this is a bill that's on behalf of DLT, would release an access easement for vehicular access to US Route 40 through 6709 Pulaski Highway. There is detailed information regarding it within the bill report, specifically from DLT. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have of myself at this time.
What's going on here? What is this, what is the easement actually, or what was it for? And why does it need to be released?
So as stated within the bill report, and I can also defer to DLT regarding this, but it was originally granted as an agreement with an agreement back in 2011 of October. The city sold the property to WH Pulaski LLC. It was just over $1 million. The property was previously the site of the Pulaski incinerator. The property is now owned by 6709 Pulaski LLC, and it is in use as an industrial warehouse. The city cannot practically use this easement, and they are, we're looking to release it.
Cool. Thanks.
Any additional questions?
Any questions? Okay, great. We will hear, thank you. We will hear from our agency's Department of Finance.
Yes, Mr. Chair. That was one of the reports that I handed you earlier, but we have no objection to this bill and do not expect a financial impact.
Great, thank you. This was not referred to the City Solicitor's office?
That's right. Law doesn't get referred, sort of simple sales of property, changes of easements, things like that anymore.
Okay, that's like the only bill category I know of that doesn't get sent to the Law Department. You're off the hook once in a while.
And renaming, yes.
Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission reviewed this and recommends favorable. We understand that the easement was originally created to access a property to the south that's over some railroad tracks, and because of that practical difficulty, it's never been exercised, and so there's no reason to keep it.
Great. The Department of Transportation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Christian McNeil, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Great. Any questions for any of our agencies, from any of our committee members? Okeydoke. Any public testimony on this bill? Councilman Parker?
Sorry. I think my only question, so just looking at the map and the description here, it all aligns. The city-owned parcel, which is on the south side of the railroad tracks, that's simply wooded area that's part of Herring Run Park functionally, right? Okay, thank you.
Great. Is there a motion to move the bill? Favorable. The bill has been moved favorable. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Great, the committee recommends the bill favorable to the council at the next council meeting. Thank you, Councilwoman McCray. Okay, hold on. Let me tick some off my list here. Torrance? We have two bills from the administration, two from Councilwoman Bullock, who said she would be here about 9:30, and two from Councilman Jones, who I don't see here. Let's go on to our two administration bills, so we will start with 250039. This is for closing of, city streets closing, a 16-foot alley and a portion of a 10-foot alley. Who, Mr. Schnella, will you be representing this on behalf of the administration?
DOT.
DOT, this is, I see. Okay, at the request of the Department of Transportation. Great. Christian, you want to tell us what this bill's about?
Sure. So this bill is essentially closing two alleys bounded by Pressman Street, Blunt Street, Robert Street, and Pennsylvania Avenue. And they will facilitate the creation of a cultural facility in... facilitate the creation of a cultural facility in the area.
Cool, um, who, which district is this in? This is in, uh, this is near Pennsylvania Avenue, so this would be probably Torrance, okay, okay, just, yeah, go ahead. Question from Councilman Porter?
Yes, my, my bad, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, um, this is a question for DOT, is this the Charm City, I mean, I'm sorry, Charm TV?
No.
Okay, then this is, uh, Councilman Torrance's district.
Yeah. Um, okey, uh, is this, uh, okay, we have Caroline Hacker here, yeah, let me come to you in just a minute, um, let's hear from the Planning Commission.
Uh, this, uh, action was originally brought to the Planning Commission back in August of twenty-twenty-three for the finding of no further public need for the two alleys, and the purpose of this is, uh, it will allow for properties to be consolidated for the construction of the Sanaa Center, which is a community center, uh, so since it's all surrounded by, uh, properties that are owned by the city and there's no further need for access, uh, those could be closed and sold, and then, um, in September, um, it was brought back, uh, and found, um, that it would be acceptable for closing, and then the change of the session happened, and is now here as a bill for the same closing, so the Planning Commission continues to recommend favorable.
Great. Uh, that's it, we just have this referred to the Planning Commission, the Department of Transportation, um, any questions for Planning Commission, DOT? Public testimony, we have Caroline Hacker here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Caroline Hacker, Rosenberg Martin, on behalf of, um, the developer of the Sanaa Center, which is the proposed cultural facility that'll be located on the adjacent properties, we actually were under the impression that this hearing was going to be postponed this morning, as you see on, in the description of it, it includes a portion of a ten-foot alley, the development team is actually now proposing to close the entire alley, and so we're waiting for that piece to catch up with, um, with the rest of the, the, uh, proposed closing, so it can all be done as one bill in one hearing, so we will eventually be proposing an amendment to this bill to include the remaining portion of the alley, um, Mr. Fram and I spoke about this, you know, ten minutes ago this morning, and, um, I think the Department of Transportation is agreeable to postponing it, uh, but I think it would be more efficient to do it as one bill rather than having two bills that each deal with a portion of this alley.
I would certainly agree, and wish I was hearing it from somebody other than you, but I, you know, hearing things from you is fine, too. Um, okay, well then, we will defer on this bill to a later date, any other questions of, from the committee at this time? Great, we will set this bill aside.
Thank you very much.
Uh, we will recess on that bill and come back to it at a later date, somebody will talk to me about when that should happen? Great, thank you. All right, then, let's go on to the other administration bill, this one is bill twenty-five zero zero five seven, at the request of Baltimore Development Corporation, sale of property fifty-four oh one Mason Lord Drive. BDC.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, Tom Welling on behalf of BDC, obviously, we stand by our favorable bill report, and I'd be happy to fill in any background about the, uh, the property or the sale, if anybody has any questions, or I could just opine-
Please do.
Okay, um, so what this is, is a, uh, this parcel is a stormwater retention pond and stormwater management facility that's located on the campus of Johns Hopkins Bayview, it was constructed in the late eighties, and the reason that the city owns it at all is because it was, um, it was built using federal economic develop authority dollars, which required the property to be owned by a public entity, the city, um, municipality, so we, uh, the land developer, Francis Scott Key Corporation, conveyed this to the city, and the city held it for, um, obviously, all of this time, there was an agreement in the original conveyance that eventually, um, through some sort of, uh, through a, a federal, um, you know, designation that this was now, that had now served its purpose under their auspices, and was able to be transferred back to, uh, the private developer that was always baked into the original legislation, um, and what this essentially does is frees up the city and the taxpayers from, uh, paying for a piece of, uh, a piece of property and a, uh, facility that only serves a private owner, uh, so this is what that does, conveys it back to Francis Scott Key Development so that they can, um, carry the water, if you will, on their own.
Thanks.
Sure.
It's on the Bayview campus?
Yeah, it's the retention pond right across from the, the main entrance, you would drive right up and you'll see it.
Yeah, and does it still have to exist as a retention pond for?
I couldn't speak to that, I do believe that it, uh, stormwater management is definitely required at Bayview in some capacity, and they, yes, I would, I would say yes.
And is Francis Scott Key, whatever corporation, they're a nonprofit or a for-profit entity?
They're the original land developer.
Of Bayview?
They, they owned the entire, the entire area when Bayview was developed in the, in the eighties, I am not, this is not, um, conveyance directly back to Francis Scott Key, and I actually don't know who will end up taking, what legal entity will end up taking it over, um, for, this just authorizes the sale, it's not, uh, actually selling it, so I think that that will be a matter that's dealt with, um, maybe through EBDI or, uh, that Bayview itself.
For those new to the committee, we are authorizing that the property can be sold, not a, an actual sale to an actual party, that's what such bills do. Um, okay, great, my guess here is that Hopkins is gonna end up owning this thing, and we won't be collecting any tax revenue from it, ever, but at least we won't have to mow the grass. Uh, any, uh, questions of the bill proponent here, BDC? Great, then we will go on to our other agencies to whom this was referred, Department of Planning.
Um, Planning recommends favorable, as you've heard, uh, to the casual observer, this would have looked like it's a part of the campus anyway, but until you look at City View and notice that the right-of-way jogs in to go around the stormwater management, uh, parcel, that would be the only indication that it's actually in the, the right-of-way, so the sale of this, uh, makes a lot of sense, uh, there's no need for it for road widening, there's, it's not big enough for a public park of any kind, so, uh, we'd be happy to let a private entity maintain it, and so we recommend favorable.
Great, uh, while I don't see Department of Transportation on this, I mean, as it is currently designated as right-of-way, is it DOT that's maintaining this property? We don't know, okay. Okay, well, we've been joined by Councilman Bullock from the Ninth District. Um, okay, uh, Department of Finance?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, we stand by our report of no objection, um, we do not expect authorizing the sale will have a significant financial impact, uh, having to maintain this property might actually be more of a fiscal issue than just selling.
Great, yeah. Uh, thank you. Uh, Department of Real Estate? Do we have anybody here from the Controller's Office? Do we have a bill report from the Department of Real Estate? The report says fav, well, our bill synopsis here says they have a favorable report, so I assume that there's one in here, and I'm not actually that concerned with it. Uh, the Department of Housing and Community Development?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Stephanie Murdock, with Baltimore City DHCD, we stand by our favorable bill report.
Great, any questions here for any of our agency representatives? Uh, okay, any public testimony on this bill? Tell us who you are, we forgot.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Caroline Hacker, Rosenberg Martin Greenberg, on behalf of, uh, FSK Corporation, which is the owner of the Bayview Campus, um, it is a Hopkins affiliated entity, um, I just want to clarify a couple of things, the property that is the subject of this, this bill, fifty-four oh one Mason Lord Drive, is not actually part of the right-of-way, so it was properly not referred to DOT, um, it is its own parcel, it is a separate parcel, and as BDC indicated, it was conveyed by, at the FSK Corporation, which was the owner of the Bayview Campus and the original developer of the hospital there, uh, back in nineteen eighty-eight to, uh, the city of Baltimore, so that the, um, federal funds could be used for the construction of the stormwater facility that's located there, the original nineteen eighty-eight agreement provided that the, the property would eventually be conveyed, conveyed back to FSK, um, you know, upon the release of the, um, by the federal government, that occurred in the fall of last year, and so this bill is, is just to clean that up and to authorize the, the sale back to FSK of the property. The stormwater facility is now and has historically been maintained by, uh, Hopkins and the Bayview Campus, as part of the Bayview Campus, so, um, I believe it does actually serve a broader area, it includes some catchment area, um, from outside the campus, but it has, um, has and will continue to be maintained by Hopkins. Happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions? Okeydoke, no questions, uh, is there a motion to vote favorable, to recommend this bill favorable?
I'll make that motion.
Uh, thank you, all in favor?
Might I also offer some comment?
Oh, please, by all means.
I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, so this is, uh, this property's located in the Second District, uh, but immediately adjacent to the First, and the, the impact of community such as it is, is the Greektown Neighbor Association, so they reached out to me because they're within the First District territory, um, and, uh, we're able to have some back and forth conversation with the Controller's Office, but also with leadership at Hopkins Bayview, that was really positive, the main thing that the community was just asking, it's, I want to commend Hopkins Bayview, for those who haven't spent much time on campus, out, out, outside of a vehicle or the hospital proper, Hopkins Bayview does an, an excellent job maintaining not only the physical space of the campus, but also maintaining public access, really broad public access, walking trails, it's, it's really, it's really lovely, the public comes and enjoys it, not only Hopkins, uh, employees and people at the hospital, but neighbors or through washing dogs and all the rest. And so, the neighbor just wanted to make sure that with this conveyance, that the public access, especially to this portion, which is, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a pond, but it's, it's rather, it's rather lovely, actually, at this point, after this many years, um, and the, the maintenance there, um, and the leadership of Hopkins Bayview assured me, assured the Greektown Neighbor Association, that there were no planned changes to the way the campus is managed, or this property in particular, to the maintenance standpoint, um, I, I think this week or this month, they're replacing the, the fencing around it because it was falling down, and so they continue to take good care of the property, so, just wanted to offer that up before we voted.
Great, thank you, we have a motion to vote favorable on this, all in favor, say aye? Aye. All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Great, the bill is voted favorable, we recommend a favorable to the council at the next meeting. Um, okay, we will go on to the bills sponsored by Councilmember Bullock, the floor is yours. We will start with, do you have any preference? Do you have any preference about what? Okay, great, we have two bills, um, let's do two thousand one West Baltimore, bill twenty-five zero zero two zero.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and colleagues, in front of you is a council bill, which is regarding two thousand one West Baltimore Street, um, this is a property that is, uh, multiple stories, and is looking to convert into multiple district, uh, into, into multiple units, um, as you can see, it has, uh, neighborhood support, and I'm looking for favorable disposition, thank you.
Great, thank you, and, um, there are no off-street parking requirements, is there, this bill was introduced some time ago before the, the council modified that zoning standard, so I'm gonna look at this real quick, does it have an, uh, an off-street parking, uh, requirement, uh, variance incorporated into it? It does, and so I, my question real quick is, does that actually need to be struck from the bill text by amendment since it's not effective, or is it just okay to leave it there since it's a moot point anyway?
I, I think since the law is now moot, um, there's no variance required, so the, the language would just be moot as well.
Okay, if, if that's a cool, if that's an okay approach, great.
Sounds all right.
Okay, great. Um, and this is for three dwelling units, it's a conditional use, um, are there, well, let's go to our agency reports, uh, real quick, uh, let's do this, uh, city solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the Law Department does approve this bill for form of legal sufficiency.
Great, uh, Department of Finance?
The Department of Finance stands by our report of no objection.
Great, Planning Commission?
Uh, Planning Commission, uh, reviewed this in their meeting of March thirteenth, and at the time, recommended amendment and approval, the amendment that we suggested was, uh, to add two variances for the gross square footage of two of the units that were undersized, that is no longer a requirement in the zoning codes, we would withdraw that recommended amendment, and so we recommend favorable.
Great, and DHCD?
Stephanie Murdock, Baltimore City DHCD, we are in support of Planning's amendment as well as the bill with a favorable report, thank you.
Great, um, any questions for the bill sponsor, or for any of our agencies from the committee? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, Mr. Tiso, just to, to return back to your, your last point, uh, on the variance side, that was the, the, as originally conceived, the twenty percent variance because of the seven hundred fifty square foot minimum, or it was the twenty-eight percent variance based on the lot area, which?
Uh, the lot area is fine, it is the, uh, size of two of the units, the gross square footage requirement, so since that falls away, the-
Because of the change we made earlier this year?
Correct.
Just trying to-
So that's no longer required, uh, we just, you know, got caught, caught in the, uh, the crossing of the amendments there, so that's no longer needed.
Okay, so then of the three variances, uh, we've dealt with off-street parking, we've dealt with the twenty percent, um, because of the under seven hundred fifty square feet, so we're still left with just the one variance to lot area?
Right, and I believe that one is in the bill already, so no amendment is required?
Um, we require a finding of uniqueness of some sort, of something, uh, unusual about this property, can you speak to this, or is there anybody that can speak to this? This is you, yeah.
I mean, I could just basically mention, again, it's a larger property, it's also a corner property-
Is the microphone on? I don't see the light on, it, oh, I can't, okay, the light on, I can't see the microphone, sorry, sorry.
No, uh, no, no problem at all, no, I said it's a, it's a corner property, it's a large property as well, um, which also adds to uniqueness.
Great, appreciate that, um, the committee will find facts to support that this meets the variance standard, all in favor of adopting finding of facts? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Great, um, the bill, as was mentioned, doesn't really, doesn't require any variances, um, I mean, uh, rather amendments, so, uh, is there a motion to move the bill favorable? That I, I heard in, in, in unison with me here, uh, the bill has been moved favorable, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Great, the bill is moved favorable, and will be recommended as such to the council at its next meeting. On to bill twenty-five zero zero five, five, zoning, conditional use, nope, sorry, wrong bill, I just dove, I just shoved two bills aside at the same time, my bad. Uh, here we are, twenty-six twenty-eight Edmondson Avenue, conditional use conversion of single-family dwelling unit up to three dwelling, to, to three dwelling units in the R-seven zoning district, variances, twenty-six twenty-eight Edmondson Avenue. Take it away, Mr. Sponsor.
Uh, yes, good morning again, Mr. Chair and colleagues, appreciate the opportunity, um, this bill is very similar to the last one, address is different, but it's also, um, a large property that had, that's also on the corner, a lot, and, um, has community support in terms of reactivating, um, this property, so again, I will look forward to your, uh, favorable disposition, thank you.
Great, city solicitor, any question for the bill sponsor? City Solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Michelle Toth, on behalf of the city solicitor's office, um, this, we rec, we approve for form and legal sufficiency, however, the bill contains a variance for off-street parking, which is no longer necessary, um, the planning department recommended removal, and we agreed with that recommendation, in addition, there's a lot size variance included, which is appropriate, um, there is some disagreement between the lot size requirement noted in the bill, and the lot size requirement noted in the planning department's report. Department's report. The Planning Department's report, um, contains a calculation of the proper lot size, so assuming it's correct, um, we would recommend, uh, the bill match the Planning Department's calculation of lot size.
I see, okay.
It's in the first full paragraph of my bill report on the third page.
We're talking about a difference of 25 feet, right?
Right.
I see. The Planning Commission report notes that the requirement is 20, is 2,750 square feet, uh, but the section two of the bill states that as 2,775 square feet. So we would want to make a very simple technical amendment to that to say 2,750 on line 25. Um, I don't see anywhere else that the error exists. Uh, thank you. Anything else from the City Solicitor? No? Great. Uh, Planning Commission?
Uh, the Planning Commission reviewed this bill in their meeting of May 15th, which is just on the other side of, uh, the amendments to the underlying Zenon Code, which is why we recommend striking the off-street parking variances. It's no longer necessary. And just to add some clarification, um, we missed the typo in the bill on the square footage requirement, uh, but just to, uh, expound on that a little bit. So each, um, dwelling in a multifamily dwelling building requires 1,100 square feet of lot area per unit. So for three units, there's also provision of the code that, uh, for three or more units, half of the lot area rounds up. So 1,100 times two and a half gets you the 2,750. That's a lot area requirement, so I think our math is correct, and that additional, uh, variance for the 25 square feet difference, uh, will be required. So, um, with that, we recommend favorable.
Great, thank you. DHCD?
Stephanie Murdock, DHCD. We respectfully stand by our favorable bill report.
Great. Um, before I ask if the committee has any questions for our agencies, I would just acknowledge our City Council President, who's stepped in, joining us here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Thanks for joining us. Um, are there any questions from the committee for any of our agencies? Um, okay, so, um, Councilman, can you just speak again quickly so that we can find some sort of facts to support the variance?
Uh, so, so again, this is another, uh, corner, uh, property as well that is not being actively used. Again, it has, uh, support from the community. It's also in the area that's undergoing some significant, uh, changes as it relates to the redevelopment of West Baltimore Mark Station, as well as the Amtrak Frederick Douglass Project. So again, um, this is a great opportunity in terms of the, uh, rehab of the neighborhood and district.
Thank you. Uh, the, the committee will vote to find facts to support the variance. I move that we find facts to support the variance. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Great, the committee finds facts to support the variance. And, uh, is there a motion to vote the bill favorable? The bill has been moved favorable. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Great, the bill will be recommended favorable to the council at its next meeting. Folks, we're down to just two bills. We started so early this morning, earlier than our normal 10 o'clock. We could have started at 10, we could be starting right now, but who wanted, who wants to have been starting like just now? Uh, you know, per Councilman Parker, we'd probably be starting eight minutes after 10, though, so. Okay, we have two bills here, 250055 and 250056. These are both zoning conditional, uh, parking lots, uh, varying, uh, at 701 and 702 Muro Street. Uh, we do not have the bill sponsor here with us today, but as a courtesy, uh, again, for those who, um, not familiar with the committee's rules, the committee has a policy of not hearing bills unless the sponsor is present. Um, but because I know bills such as these require public advertising and notice, and I don't want to put anybody out on that, I will hear the bills, but we will not vote these bills today. Um, uh, we, can we have our proponents come up and give testimonies to the purpose of the bill? Thank you. And we'll just hear,
Thank you so much, Mr.
Let me just, sorry. Is it okay, these are two essentially identical bills for two properties. Is it, can I kind of concurrently hear these two bills?
I think as long as you speak to the facts, um, of, of each, but it, in the end, it'll be the council that'll be adopting required findings of fact. Um, but yeah, just, just make sure that it's on the record that you are, that it's both, taking a vote on both separately.
Yeah, well, we're not gonna take a vote today. I just-
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
But I want to hold the hearing.
Oh, then that's fine, yep.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, and hopefully I can make this extra quick, so I would like to request a postponement for both 25-0055 and 0056, just to allow for some additional time for, um, the applicant to discuss, um, with committee members and, um, city representatives what we're going to be doing specifically with the parking spots.
Postponement granted.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Um, the committee's business is concluded for the day. Thank you all. Look at that, one hour.